Welcome everybody to the Pineville City Council Meeting of June 18th, 2012. We'll call this meeting to order. This is Woodfield, may we have a roll call please?
I want to help. I'm trying to get through. I'm scared. I'm trying to get through. I'm trying to get through.
Okay, each of you have a copy of your minutes from June 12th. We move in properly second. Minutes from June 12th. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye. Next, we will run into our committee reports and, uh, Brummett, are you hoping to drive here again? So if you will, please.
Resolutions, we have brought in number six, seven, eight, as we complained. I also have a request from Alderman Board and many others with sponsors. A resolution authorized in the rest of the areas that is under contract. So, for example, to propose to take forward the test for hands. I have a question just in terms of the general. I'm going to do a bit of this.
It's been moved in properly second that we add the resolution by Alderman Board to the agenda. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries six, zero. Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, I would be number nine.
Number nine, yes. Okay. Please, I mean, sir, yes.
Agent, you have interpacted a request from the street department. Twenty-four hundred and fifty dollars traffic signal control. Budget traffic signal revenue to fund traffic control signal expenses. And now it's four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. I'm going to accept this budget adjustment from the street department.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $4,450 to budget traffic signal revenue to fund traffic control signal expense. This is funded through the street department. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Excuse me, the motion carries six, zero.
We also have one that was added, uh, tonight from the police department. Those are two different items. One is for drug expenses for the dare from seized cash held as evidence in case cases for which litigation has been finalized. Those are all the very expenses funded through insurance reimbursement. So the first one is seven thousand seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents, which is the seized cash that the police department's been involved with. And they're asking to be able to utilize that money to provide information that's been involved with the dare program. The second quarter is fifteen thousand eighty-two thirteen. That's basically a return payment that you decided on, uh, direct to the vehicle.
Yes.
And it's to put the money in proper account when they can find out. So I'm going to accept this budget adjustment.
It's been moved in properly second that a budget adjustment in the amount of $7,017.76, which will be budget expenses for the drug abuse resistance education, the dare program, which is funded from seized cash held as evidence in cases for which litigation has been finalized. And also, the other amount is for $15,082.13, which will, uh, is budget for auto repair expenses funded through insurance reimbursements. Okay. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries six, zero.
Mayor, I move that bills of city motion paid.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second that the bills of the city be paid. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? All right. The motion carries six, zero. Thank you, sir. Uh, we're going to move on to economic community involvement. Alderman Walker.
Mayor, I have no report from community involvement, but I would like to give a report for Mrs. Holcomb, uh, because, you know, people are getting curious why she's not here. They think that she's worse off than she is. Uh, she had a hip replacement and she's doing fine, but she's following the doctor's orders because she says, when she get out, she wanted to be right, so she don't want him to say she did nothing wrong. And she is expected to be back the middle of next month.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And one other thing, um, can I mention downtown? The parade for the event downtown, the thirtieth.
Might as well, yeah, or do it happen.
Okay. The businesses downtown is having, uh, an event, you know, something similar to Pot de Grau to bring people downtown and make, uh, gives, you know, citizens some place to go downtown. They really working hard to revitalize downtown, and I think it's called, um, Sounds for Downtown or something like that, but they have all different types of music, and that's the thirtieth, so we appreciate if everybody go down.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Alderman Mays, Public Health and Welfare.
We didn't have a meeting, mayor, but I just wanted the people to know that in the fourth ward, that the street department is cutting the ditches over there, now the grass and the ditches, uh, and they're doing good. Matter of fact, all over town, but the fourth ward is giving, you know, share. And, uh, I talked with Mr. Mark Townsend over at the health department about the mosquitoes. They are getting bad. They really are, and people been asking about that. And if anybody want to call him, his name is Mark Townsend at the health department, his number is five-three-five twenty-one forty-two. And we also give him like, what, $10,000 a year to spray for mosquitoes, if I'm not mistaken?
I'm not sure what the amount is. We'll find out.
Are they spraying already, did he say?
No, not yet. He's probably prepping up for what he's supposed to be doing, but his number, once again, is five-three-five twenty-one forty-two, Mr. Mark Townsend. He's the one know what he doing, so I...
They need to be cranked up already. They've got early, everything's early this year, so he needs to be, needs to be on the move, because they're bad.
Yeah, I agree. I have another question.
I think he'll crank up out like he usually does.
He usually cranks up by now, yeah.
And I have, since I'm, since I got the floor, I have a question also. And you all may, just, I'm still a freshman. You all may can help me this year. Just say, for instance, if a inspector, electrician fixes a meter that a tree has fell on it from a house and the people have lost their power, and the electrician calls the inspector to come out and tag the meter, and just say, and for instance, if the inspector say it fails, does that homeowner own that inspector if it comes back out and it fails again?
Does the homeowner what now?
Owees that inspector money.
Owees the inspector money?
Right.
Owees the plumber, owees the electrician?
The electrician, they elect, no, the inspector.
I don't know. Why don't you check that out with Mr. Tucker?
Can anybody answer that question? That's a question, because they're saying that they paying them to come out and put a tag on these meters. And if the, if the electrician fail it, the inspector comes out and what he'll do is fail it, and the people got to pay him like, you know, less than $20.
If you would, just take that up with Mr. Tucker and they could take the specific case and be able to address...
Can he answer that?
Is that a city inspector?
Because Scotty say you been doing it, the city been doing it for a long time, because I called him out, because the people had called me to, they was dragging their feet and their lights on. And these people were, I mean, can he answer that question? Because if it is, it's not right.
Well, the fact is, well, really, he'd not answer that right now until you go to the specific case.
That is not right if they doing that.
I, that's what I'm saying, I don't...
This one was in a wheelchair with her lights out, and they playing around and taking money from them, if that's the case, and that's not fair.
Yeah, but that's what we saying, to get all evidence of the case, just get with Mr. Tucker, he can look at that specific incident and be able to address it with you. He's, he is the...
They say this is the law, when they come out, these are poor people giving away money to inspectors to put their green tag on the box every time it fails. They told me, now.
Okay.
I called Scotty, and Scotty say they been doing it for a long time.
They always put a green tag if it fails, but as far as the charging, you know, just get with him, and he'll be able to explain that to you, sir.
He need to answer to the public, because if he taking public's money like that, he need to come up here now and ask, you know, ask, talk about that, because it's not right.
All right, we only going to talk about it now, but you get with him after that, he'll get, he'll straighten that out with you, sir.
Mayor, that's not right, if they doing it.
Well, that's what, we don't know if they're doing it, sir. That's why I said, he'll look at the specific case and he'll be able to address it. Okay. That's it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Public works, Alderman Boyd.
Uh, mayor, we have, we have a meeting, but we have item number nine on for discussion again tonight.
Yes.
I think Mr. Matthews will have the presentation on to go get due.
Yes, all right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
At our last council meeting, uh, we requested that, uh, we consider rebidding the gymnasium floor as well as the commercial brown tile at Chester High. Since that point, we have received new bids on both items. Our first bid, both these bids came in this morning. As the last sheet is reflected, uh, four vendors versus the two last time, we bid on four different types of gymnasium floors. Bids came in this morning on various types of floors, uh, was reflected on the report. At this point, uh, it's before the council as to the actions taken, but it's my recommendation that we, uh, look at the various types of floors, get with parks commission and parks director, see what type of floors the data are, which would fit better, uh, at the, at the, at the, so. On the front sheet is the overall portion of the project, that it tells what has to be done, what's left to be done at Chester High Center. Not just the gym floor, but the overall picture, which includes various items that are on the sheet. We have a cost of $59,872, in fact, on $1,952.31 that is required to fill all our obligations at the project. The work is, that we have contracted is, uh, possibly ninety-five, ninety-six done, which we have on the contract. There's an additional $105,621 that we feel is needed to complete the entire project at Chester High. We saved approximately $44,000 in result of rebidding the project back up. Back over again with regards to installation of the commercial brown tile. There are some, since we cannot, since we cannot figure out which one of the things were there, could be some possible significant savings there. Forty-one thousand five twenty is left, because I, I reported to you all before that number, and it has been a significant change, $44,000, with regards to our last report. Any questions?
What's in the $44,000, uh, savings, young brother?
The majority of it came from the brown tile and, uh, material and installation that we had on the last bid. We went back and revisited and we decided to go with another product. Also, the installation and, uh, ceiling tile, we did not need as much as we anticipated, so there was some savings there.
Now, on the court bid, the sports court south, they only do the interlock, is that all they do? Then the others? And then the others don't do the interlock, but they do all, they do all the others except for one.
She has regional franchise in Arkansas, which will not allow to give the competitive term in Arkansas.
So what floor, what floor did the Parks and Rec Committee come up with?
Well, up until this point, they only saw the interlocking floor. They have not seen the signals, uh, and they have not seen the road. They gave everyone's way, where, where hardwood is, although this number appears to be fairly low in comparison to hardwood floors. So, um, they have not made a decision with regards to the new bids that we got today. We would like to bring the representative down, the representative is from Memphis. We like to bring it down, bring the product down and take a look at all to see which will fit this park's part, uh, so the bar.
Reverend, would you like to, uh, would you like to speak on that? I don't want to get ahead of you.
No, go right ahead.
I would like to recommend that we stay with the one that we had, because, uh, the bid that we had before, the lady had, um, a whole page and a half of references, uh, all over the state and, and outer state. She even had one with the federal bureau in Yazu, Mississippi. And these are, you know, these are people that we don't really know anything about. They out of Texas, Memphis, and someplace else. So I would, you know, I personally think that, you know, we should stay, you know, with sports court south. I would like to make that motion.
But didn't this part of them also look at the lower floor?
Yes, they did. And this is the one that they came up with.
I don't know about looking at other floors. We had bids, we only had one other bid, we should have three bids. This, there still be a decision made. We have bids and we have lower bids here. They will, Mr. Matthews will meet with the lower bidder.
They looked at some of different quality.
No.
And came up, they didn't?
No. We only looked, last time we only had two bids, and that was it. So that's what I'm saying, with this particular thing here, what needs, what, what, Mr. Matthews is suggesting that be done is that the people with the material, he take a look at it and make sure they meet the specs. He will then make a recommendation as to what floor to go with, and the parks department being the parks commission then will make the decision on what floor, or the recommendation on what floor that they will go with. You know, we have one, two, three, four, four different types of floors. You know, and I think by just taking a higher bid without looking at the other bid can be a, create a problem for us. He's going to do his due diligence, his work this week, bring the information back to the council at the next council meeting. By that time, we will have some indications of how we will pay for this. See, another key component of this is that, keep in mind, all the money that been associated for this project has been spent, so the council will have to come up with the additional dollars to pay for the rest of the, completing the job. So we need to complete the job and complete it in the most cost-effective and cost-efficient manner for the citizens of the community. And that, that's why I'm suggesting is that whichever floor comes back as a recommendation and is better price performance is the floor that we should go with. If that's the interlock, we go with that. If that's the hardwood, we go with that. If it's the seamless pad, we go with that. You know, but he still needs to do his due diligence, and the reason why they can complete it over the last two weeks is that the parks commission maintenance supervisor was on vacation for two weeks, and the bids didn't come in until this morning, right, sir?
Yes.
Yeah.
The state law required that advertised in the paper twice, and, and the timeframe between the last council meeting and this council meeting allowed for the bid come, come in earlier than this morning.
Mr. Matthews has, um, looked at the interlock floor. He had did that, um, what, a month ago, and, and the longer, you know, it's not a lot of difference. In fact, this is the lowest bid next to, uh, the one from sports south, and I think that that's extremely low. Everybody else is in the forties, and this, you know, company is in the thirty-six, uh, you know, and they are not even in Arkansas. So, and the summer is passing, and the kids need, you know, we need to finish it up, my thinking. And Ms. Parker is here, you know, could Ms. Parker come forth and discuss this floor?
May I say something first?
Uh, just a minute, please. Mark, would you, would you, uh, tell us what, you know, the research that you had did on the floor and, uh, and all the particulars about it?
Well, the reason that we had chosen this floor is because it's kind of like puzzle pieces. It, it fits together, and I had had Reverend Boyd, Reverend Mays, I mean, Alderman Mays, and I had asked that you go by there if you could, and I know Ms. Holcomb couldn't go by. I've asked all my commissioners to go by and look at this floor and let Laura explain to them how it works and why we like that particular floor. If one piece, you have a problem with it, they can pop that piece out, stick another piece right back in there, and this company comes and paints the floor themselves also. You know, if you wanted a golden line on the middle of the floor, or whatever, whatever lines you want, if you want hopscotch or something on the side of it for, you know, extracurricular activities for the kids, they will paint all of this. And if it happens to be one of the pieces that are painted that comes messed up, they will come back, pop that piece out, put a regular piece back in there for the time being, so you're never out of business. They'll repaint that piece for you, and it takes three days to dry, and they'll pop it right back in there. And, you know, like right now, you've got a whole piece, and you have problems with several pieces of it. You basically have to replace the whole floor instead of just replacing that piece that needs to be there. I mean, she's still got the sample there, if any of you would like to go and look at it, but I just think it, it's a better match for having any problems later and being able to go back and fix it.
Did y'all look at the seamless pad? Are you familiar with the seamless pad?
The seam, no, I have not.
The seamless, is that the one you were saying? Of course, it, you know, it, it says itself that if something go wrong with that piece, then you have to take up the whole thing, right?
I'm not sure on the seamless how it works, okay, like what we have now, yeah.
And what's down there now has basically potholes in it, basically, and it's dangerous to the kids, and, you know, if we wait any longer, the summer going to be over and our kids going to miss out, you know, again, by, by the council. I agree with Alderman Walker, Alderman Boyd, I don't know how you all feel, but I feel we need to fix the floor, because the rest of the gym is, is pretty much complete on the, in the court area, and, and give our children something good this summer, you know, and just stop playing with our children. They deserve that full face, where they won't get hurt running around playing basketball, just trying to have fun.
The floor will be repaired and fixed, replaced. That's not, that's not the problem. What we must do is honor the process and procedures that we go through on our bid processes. We cannot just arbitrarily decide without having some justification, and that's why I'm saying Mr. Matthews will meet with the bidders, the vendors, and he will look at that material to make sure they meet specifications, and he'll get back with the council, and in that process, we will then have identified how it's going to be paid for. See, this, this is the other thing, we've spent all the money that's been allocated, but we need to address, if I'm not mistaken, about a hundred and, 107,000 more dollars that the council must come up with. So we got to figure out where we going to get that money from, you know, and I think with him making the recommendation on the floor and the interlock floor, if it has the better price performance, he can justify that and be able to do that, and it keeps us from being in harms way with the low bidder. You know, that's, that's all he's suggesting to the council is that we look at what needs to be done prior to us making decision to get a floor when we know there's three lower prices on here.
Well, I would just like for myself, my community center director, and my commission to have a say-so also.
Absolutely. Y'all would make a recommendation. I think it's very important.
We made a recommendation on what color to paint it, was totally...
I think that's absolutely...
We got nothing to do with it.
No, that's not fair. Young lady, what was her name, Mr. Tucker, that came over and make the...
No, I said, we didn't get to, we told them we didn't like the color, and it didn't matter whether we liked it or not, that's the color we got.
Mayor Rita's, um, Ms. Parker is representing, um, the commission, and the commission really has a say-so about the upkeep of the buildings, the park buildings. And, and so she is their representative, uh, and she is really responsible for keeping up the building, uh, and as well as the park.
This is not a matter of deciding about upkeep, ma'am. This is a matter of deciding, excuse me one second, deciding on the proper way we handle bid process to keep us out of harms way. We, we, yes, we did, we only had two bids, and we should have had three bids, and one bid was disqualified, so that's what we went with this.
From my understanding, if only two bid on it, and it has been advertised, you're still following bid procedure.
I don't, I don't have a problem with them deciding, going back, being some bids come in this morning, we let the commission decide what floor they want. When they decide what floor it want, then we'll know what bid we need to look at. But I would cast a very wary eye on one of these bids in here, Mr. Matthews. I'd cast a very wary eye on one of these bidders.
Well, until I get a chance, that is big.
Something's really out of line in here. If we're going to do that, we need, we need a recommendation from them about which floor they want, when they have which floor they want, then at that point, we'll know what bid we need to look at. If they decide the interlock, the rest of them's out, because there's nobody else bid on it.
Have your commission looked at any of this?
Some of them have gone and looked at it, yes, and, but Laura Hildreth, my community center director, was told last week by the contractor that the contractor was informed not to speak to anybody but Larry, and I don't think that's right. That, I should be able to ask them questions, Laura should be able to, as well as any of my commissioners, when they're discussing our building.
Yeah, because that's under, that's totally under y'all's control. It should be go to y'all before it goes to anybody else, anything.
May I speak, mayor?
Yes.
You know, you tell a citizen sometime just anything as far as the cash flow, it's a steady stream of cash coming through the city of Pineville, it's like a MasterCard with a hole in it. And that's not funny. We spend...
That is, not only is it not funny, it is wrong, sir. It is absolutely wrong.
We spend $600,000 every two weeks on payroll. Am I right? 1.2 million a month on payroll. It's a steady stream of cash coming through here every month, and we just can't fix that floor? Now, everything else we want in this town, we get.
No, we, nobody said...
This is for the children.
Excuse me one second, nobody said we couldn't fix the floor, sir. What's been recommended here is that follow the procedure that we as a municipality must follow. You know, the right decision is going to be made, that's what I'm saying, and then the council must decide where the dollars, the revenue will come from to pay the additional amount of money, not only for the floor, but for the rest of the project, $177,000. That's got to be decided by the council. And that's what I'm saying, and a recommendation will be made to the council by finance as to where the funding will come from. And, and, excuse me a second, and funding, let me assure you, that's why we have a budget, sir. We operate in, through a budget, a municipal budget, and understanding where funding is and understanding how funding is taking place is something that I think we all spend time understanding, and we must do that. We, we, we are absolutely not like a MasterCard, a Visa Card, or anything of that nature. We got in prob, we got in... We got in prob, we got in trouble when we operated like that. We will not operate in that sense. That is not the way we operate. That's not the way we will operate.
When you look at all the other expenses, I think when it come down to the floor, that interlock probably going to end up being the lowest bidder anyway.
Yeah, if, if, if not only the lowest bidder, it might be the recommendation, might be the recommendation made by, by the commission and the parks department. That's, that's their decision to make.
Right.
But what we have to do is basically make sure we follow the process that we must follow in order to make the right decision and to justify our decision in order to keep ourselves out of harm's way, out of litigation.
Who do we have to justify to?
Well, let me, let me assure you, we have to justify, first of all, to the citizens of Pine Bluff.
I know, that's why, that's who I'm talking about.
That's who we have to justify to. The citizens of Pine Bluff.
The citizens want the floor so that children can start playing on it.
Well, let me, let me assure you, the floor will be down as quick as we can possibly get the floor down. You know, keep in mind, that was not enough money to do anything. That's why we are looking at doing this other hundred and seven thousand dollars because the sixty thousand dollars that was allocated by the council initially has been spent. It was fifty-nine, what, fifty-nine, sixty thousand? You know, same thing. And that was, if I'm not mistaken, the council recommendation was that, that was to cover both Chester Heinz and the Merrill Center. So, that absolutely was not enough money. So, that's why we're saying we need, as a council, to identify another hundred and seven thousand dollars to complete this project. And it's absolutely, without a doubt of a, a doubt in my mind, the best spent money for this community. Chester Heinz is looking like a community center once again. We should never allow our facilities to get into that shape. It's a shame that we dealt with our youth with a facility like that and allowed a facility to get in that shape. So, we will get it complete. But what we got to do is make sure that we are spending the funds in a cost-effective and efficient manner. And we will, we have been. And we will complete the job in a sense that it's going to be a well-done job. No doubt about that.
I make a motion that we go with Sports Court South.
Yeah, the resolution takes care of that. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Actually, it's like Spanish to me because I don't know. I've heard of different kinds of floors that protect the kid or individual that falls. That's as much as I know. Without me looking at a floor...
I'd be happy for you to come by and we'll show you that.
You know, well, you know, if you got three or four bids on different floor, I need to see all the floors so I can make a decision like that. But I don't think that's our decision. I think it is the commission's or somebody else's decision.
Right.
They bring it to us and we...
Right.
Look at the amount of money they spend and where we're going to get the money from the paper.
Like I said, that's why I'm not happy about being told by a contractor that they can't speak to me about my own building.
Well, I don't know whether you and I are speaking on the same terms or not, but I just, I'm not an expert with floors.
Angela, let me ask you, which contractor told you that?
Let's move on.
Excuse me, I'll ask you one question. Which contractor told you that?
Simon Keith Ross told her that. She told me that Friday.
Keith Ross told who that?
Laura, that she was asked not to speak to any, he was asked not to speak to anyone but Larry.
Okay, Keith Ross is, is not a floor contractor.
I'm not talking about the floor. I'm talking about what we've got going on over there right now, the painting and everything else.
I, I don't understand how that relates to, to what you're talking about, but he has nothing, he has nothing to do with the flooring, right?
I just want, trying to bring up the point that I would like for myself and my commissioners and Laura as the director to be involved in decisions that are made for that place.
And they should be.
I agree with that.
And they should be. Absolutely, no doubt about it. That's why we're saying that this information needs to be presented to the commissioners and allow them to make the recommendation. Absolutely.
Like I said, we made a recommendation on the paint and we were shot down.
Well, just because one mistake was made, don't make two.
That completes my report, right?
All right.
On the page, where, where did it go through? It went to the commission and then where?
It never went through the commission. It depends on what the project is. I do call Larry a lot because Larry knows a lot about construction and everything. But sometimes he'll help me with the bid specs. He helped us on the softball complex when we bid that out. And some smaller things Kevin can do on his own. But I do, Larry does help me a lot on a lot of our projects. Oh, I have the utmost respect for Larry. He, he helps me a lot. I guess the mayor's. No.
No, it was rebid because we, we are the ones that did the bidding, sir. We did, we did, I know who you're talking to, but I'm answering, giving you the answer. We rebid it because we did not have enough bids. That is a, that is a municipality.
But if you advertise for it and only two bids are turned in, from my understanding from the city attorney's offices, you still met those specs, what you're supposed to do because...
Well, you know, I, I disagree with you on that because it was handled in a sense that Mr. Matthews thought it should have been handled in. But nevertheless, I agree with you that the fact that the commissioners should be involved in this. Mr. Matthews, you probably should show them the different types of material or let them make the recommendation to the council as to which one. And then the council knows where we need to go to get the money.
Nothing, you said you'd have it for us tonight. We asked the council, you said within two weeks, we will come back with a recommendation. I don't care whose on vacation, does nothing to do with it. I expected to come tonight with a recommendation. And so to me, again, this floor is the only we need to go with and move on. That's what I think.
Excuse me.
I think at the last meeting, I said I'd have bids back in. I, I don't know who will make the recommendation. All I do is build.
I think you have the bids here, but...
Knowing the message, there's sometime I get shocked.
You have the bids here.
I have, but no one has recommended to me to go with any particular floor as of today from the bid results this morning. That's not my call, so.
And what he will do is get with the commissioners, the parks department, and they will make that recommendation. We as a council then will find, if we agree to come up with a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred and seven thousand, and I hope that we will, we'll find where the source of funding will come from. That's our job in this role, to find the source of funding.
Mayor Rita, do, do we have a choice of whether we are going to do the building or not?
We decided that, yes, what do you mean? Yes, we, yes, your council does.
So, so are you saying that we will not do it, that we need to look for the money so we find the money or don't do the building? Is that what you're saying?
Well, how else are we going to do it if the council doesn't find the money?
But we started the project. There are ways and means that we, we will find the money.
Well, absolutely. And I think everybody agrees with that. We're working diligently every day to identify sources of funding for another hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Well, I think the council will be involved in finding that.
It will be presented to you at ways and means. That's the way, that's the process. That's the process.
If anybody would like to go by and see that floor, Laura would be more than happy to show you and show you how it works and explain to you why we would like that floor.
You only have one copy, I mean, one replica of the floor, just one?
And that's, that's Mr. Matthews' job to get the copies of the others so you can look at all the floors and the commissioners will look at all the floors, not just one copy of the floor. You will look at all of them while you're there.
Exactly.
See, that's why I say we have to follow procedures. We have to follow the way you make decisions. You make a decision not based on one, you based on one, two, three, four, five. And then you got information to make your decision off of.
Well, I, I seriously recommend that there still is a chance for the one that on the table can...
Absolutely.
But let's look at the other ones also. So, that will be our cover. And that's what, that's my recommendation. That's what I think we ought to do.
Now, these other companies are out of state.
I honestly don't know, Ms. Walker.
Am I correct?
Everyone except for Barnes.
Right. So, what are we going to do? Wait until these people from Texas and Memphis bring us some, some samples?
The only other company that we come out of Memphis was Sports.
That's the one that's, that we know we don't want.
That's the lowest bidder. No, sports floor is the lowest bidder. You can't just make a decision, you know you don't want them. Please don't make comments like that in the public. That just absolutely is not the proper thing to do. We cannot say we don't...
It's nothing improper about it if they are that far out of line.
They are the lowest bidder.
It doesn't matter. They, it's still our choice.
Yeah, but what you mean out of line? You get the best quality that you want to get, yes. Yes.
But to answer your question, Ms. Walker, the only company that will be brought in, since he is consistently low on all the floors, will be the Memphis company.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I've heard a bunch of us talking. I want to know what the attorneys say about the bids, the original and the second.
Well, as it relates to the bid, the requirement for three bids has to do with purchases that are made that are five hundred to two thousand dollars. They ask for three written bids and then three, and then from, I think, five hundred to two thousand dollars for purchases, it's three tele, bids by phone. And, but for purchases for ten thousand, for over ten thousand dollars, there is no number that's listed, if that's the question.
If there's above...
Ten thousand dollars.
About ten thousand, there's what?
There's no requirement. Just run it in the paper and, and solicit the bids and then make the evaluation.
And whatever bid you get, that's it.
That's always been my understanding. As long as you have advertised and everybody's had the chance to bid and the only people bid were two, then, then you have still met what you've got to do.
And the third one was late. So, the first, the first bid process met the law according to what you've said.
It does. But, and at the same time, as far as revoking the bid, the mayor has that authority to revoke the bid as well. I mean, it's, he can, he can do that. The ordinance allows for that as well. The ordinance allows for the, to revoke the bid or to, what, decline the bid? Or reject, I should say, reject the bid. You can do that. The mayor can do that. The mayor.
Okay.
Well, but in this situation, the Parks Commission has, has full and complete authority as it relates to their, their property. So, in this particular instance, they would have probably been the ones to take the bid on the front end.
And the Parks Department will take these bids, the lower bids, and they will make the decision on all the bids. And they will make a recommendation back to us and we will then make a decision on how the funding will take place. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Now, Mr. Matthews, what are you planning on getting with the individual bid?
I'm calling individual in the morning and set the time accordingly. I would certainly like to make it when it's available for everyone to come to see the product.
That would be a good idea, when everybody can come and listen to the host bill that can't.
But I think what's important is to make sure the park commissioners see the products.
That's who I'm talking about.
Yes, that's what's important. If everybody here can't get out to see them, make sure the park commissioner get out and see the different products. All right.
They're the ones who need to see it. They're the ones that need to make the decision. We'll make the money to see them. The others are ours.
That's right.
I agree with that. The parks...
Mr. Paul, let me ask you this. On either one that we have on the agenda, are you saying we need to wait until everyone be ready?
The mayor's saying that, yeah.
Ma'am?
The mayor's saying that, yeah. If he's wanting the commission to come back and make... All my commissioners I've talked to were with the interlocking floor. They wanted to go with that. And Ms. Jimenez says she wasn't allowed to speak last week or she was going to tell y'all that. Ms. Tiki Jimenez?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All righty. Is that it, sir? Mr. Reddick?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Development and planning, so Mr. Step is not here. Is anyone here for?
Yes, development, planning, bed home. Twelve, I believe, eleven, two, one week, outside, Monday.
Okay. Okay. That's it? Traffic and aviation?
No report, Mr. Mayor. However, I did ask Mr. Hale to be here tonight, but he had another engagement. He'll be here next meeting to give us a report on the Black Pilots' arrival here on last month and also the project and the building that's going on at the airport. So, we'll get a report from you on the next meeting. We'll probably be first next month.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Isley, administration?
No, Lord Mayor.
Public safety, Mr. Brummett?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Well, Mr. Brummett, would you take us on into our ordinances and resolutions, sir?
Yes, sir. We have an ordinance amending section seven dash forty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Building Code up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending section seven dash forty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Building Code.
Move, place it on the calendar and refer it to the Development and Planning Committee. Then we have an ordinance amending section seven dash one sixty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2011 edition of the National Electrical Code of the National Fire Protection Association up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending section seven dash one sixty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2011 edition of the National Electrical Code of the National Fire Protection Association.
Place it on the calendar and refer it to the Development and Planning Committee. We have an ordinance amending section seven dash one eighty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Residential Code up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending section seven dash one eighty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Residential Code.
Place it on the calendar and refer it to the Development and Planning Committee. We have an ordinance amending section seven dash two twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2010 edition of the Arkansas Municipal Code up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending section seven dash two twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2010 edition of the Arkansas Mechanical Code.
Place it on the calendar and refer it to the Development and Planning Committee for recommendation. We have an ordinance amending section seven dash three oh one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Maintenance Code up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending section seven dash three oh one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code.
Place it on the calendar and refer it to the Development and Planning Committee for recommendation. We have a resolution commending Ezeryn Williams for service to the community as a member of the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution commending Ezeryn Williams for service to the community as a member of the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption?
It's been moved and properly seconded, a resolution commending Ezeryn Williams for services to the community as a member of the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Floor is open for discussion. Ms. Williams couldn't be here this evening, but she's done a tremendous job as a board member of the Library Board of Pine Bluff Jefferson County. She should be commended. Sir, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries six, zero.
We have a resolution honoring Lee Meadows Senior for his service to the community by naming the street Lee Meadows Senior Drive.
There's a correction on this. The middle initial is, should be V., Lee, V. Meadows Senior. Senior, and this is a resolution...
It should be Lee, what now?
V. as in Victor.
V.
Yes. And we'll make that change in our office. A resolution honoring Lee V. Meadows Senior for his service to the community by naming a street, um, Lee V. Meadows Senior Drive.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. A resolution honoring Lee V. Meadows Senior for his services to the community by naming street, by naming a street, Lee V. Meadows Senior Drive. Okay, floor is open for discussion.
Meadows family is here. Mr. Lee Meadows is here. And we ask you to come up, please.
Say something to also on that, on that correction. They would, the family would like it to be Lee, Lee Meadows instead of the senior on there. You can ask them.
That's not, it's, it's for his family.
That's the family. That's what the family's saying.
But you do not want senior on the... Okay. All righty.
And since, since I'm speaking, he done a good job. I remember his children, he had a young man, he had working in the parks and stuff. Really, and it was an awesome thing. Awesome.
Mr. Meadows? Thank you. Did you want to come to the speaker? To the phone or just to?
Yes, sir.
Huh? Oh, that's right. We have to vote on things. Just a moment, sir. Yep. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, a resolution honoring Lee V. Meadows for his services to the community by naming a street, Lee V. Meadows Drive. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries six, oh, six zeros.
You can come up, we can choose a device so you don't have to talk real loud.
Very happy to have this honor. I think this honor is thinking about me. I worked 30 years for Parks Department in our system. A lot of those men that work, now they work for me in summer. And I tried to treat them personally.
That is weird.
So I'm really proud to get this honor and I plan to keep, keep on working. And knowing that...
Mr. Meadows, for the benefit of the community, I'm going to read the resolution as it's stated for the services that you've rented to the community. Whereas Mr. Lee Meadows, Lee V. Meadows, served this community tirelessly, tirelessly, as an employee of the Parks Department for more than 30 years, working to improve parks in the city, and his dedication is an example of the involved citizen making a positive difference in the community. And whereas his service and commitment deserves special recognition through the naming of a street which dissects Townsend Park and which will serve as a continuing reminder of the gratitude of the community to Mr. Meadows. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the unnamed street which runs through Townsend Park between Birch Street to Townsend Drive is hereby named Lee Meadows Senior, Lee Meadows, Lee V. Meadows Drive. The street department shall take steps to install signs reflecting the name change as soon as possible. Sir, we will get that done as soon as possible. Congratulations to you, congratulations to you and your family, and thank you for all you've done for this community. Thank you.
And to the Meadows family, Mr. George Stepp, he could be here tonight. He had an emergency come up.
Okay.
Mayor, we have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and our structures as nuisances and ordering their abatement.
A resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and our structures as nuisances and ordering their abatement.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have amendments that...
Okay. Okay. Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we amend, we remove the following abatements from the resolution. I think each of you have a copy of the following abatements. Okay. All in favor of the amendments, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Okay, the motion carries six, zero.
I move that we approve the resolution as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded that the original as amended be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the original as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries six, zero. Okay. Mr. Boyd, let me ask you something on, on the resolution that we added. In order to the fact that we're going to make a recommendation from the Parks Department, my suggestion is that we allow them to come back with the recommendation and then bring this forth again.
I'll have big one in the committee. Personally, I think, and this is my thoughts from looking at it, I think we're going to deal with it up with the other lot.
Well, if that's the case, that's absolutely wonderful. But this keeps us out of harm's way in making sure that we do not make a decision and then it allows someone else to come and say that we did this without giving them their unduly right. You know, he must come up with justifications to justify whatever ones we go, and then the commissioners will make that decision.
Mayor, can, you know, can we not choose, you know, which bid that we want to?
Okay. But that's, y'all just said that that should be the park commission make the recommendation.
This is their recommendation.
They make the decision.
It is their recommendation. Yes, sir, it is. You heard Ms. Walker say it was.
We will, we will get a written recommendation from the park commission based on the various projects and the various materials that they've seen. They will make a decision deciding on which ones is best, and then we will decide to pass that and fund that. That's the way that's handled.
That was the one that came to the committee.
From the Parks Commission.
No, it did not come from the Parks Commission, sir.
Why don't we deal with this one that's on the floor and then if we just have to come back and rescind it?
Mr. Mayor...
What, what I'm saying, I, I think what this does with, in light of the fact that we have other bids, bids that are lowered, that we must go through the process of them looking at that with Mr. Matthews, and Mr. Matthews then take their recommendation on the ones that they are recommending, as opposed to us just arbitrarily deciding that this is the one that we're going to go with. He will provide us with some written documentations and some recommendations coming from the park commission.
I understand that, but like I say...
And also, and also...
This is the one they brought to the committee.
And also, Mr. Mayor...
That was, that was not the park commission, sir. That's what I'm saying. Yes.
And also, that will give us all a chance to go over and see the floors and see something. I'm just dumbfounded right now. I think we all need to know what's going on. We're just, I mean, this, this, this may come back, but let's give it a chance. Let's give, let's give the others a chance. I, I think that, uh, when we, when we, you know, get more information on it, then we can make a better decision. But as I'm listening, it's not necessary to say the council's decision. We're just going to make financial decision.
We have for us an, a resolution that came to us through the committee from the Parks Department. Through the proper process, we bid it, they selected this as the low bid, as the bidder. The city attorney says this is legal, perfectly okay to do what, what they have asked us to do.
But I think it still has a chance to be just that. I think we, to move tonight would be a little hasty or a little twisting arms quickly.
It's just premature, sir.
Yeah, I just think we just, this has still a chance, but we just need to give it. I've been seeing the floor.
If, if it's the best project...
We got to make a decision.
And the best material, it's going to be recommended. There's no if and buts about it.
If we have a motion...
I can't make a decision on hardwood. None of us can make a decision on hardwood, seamless pad, or interlock.
Unless, unless Ms. Boyd pulls it, we need to process the resolution through the system with the...
May I speak, I want to the committee. Now, and all the one who walked in, all the one, all the one who's chairing. I would mean, excuse me, serious business. We met on a Friday morning. They called us out here on a Friday morning to, to discuss that. I mean, it was business as usual. It was a regular committee meeting, and we discussed it. Now, after the meeting, the next week now is, we're still holding up the floor. I need a motion?
Sir, the floor can't be done until...
I, I...
Excuse me, I understand. The floor can't be done until money is allocated for the floor, so it's not holding up anything.
You're holding this floor because you're mad at Angela because of all that stuff going on.
That is, that is absolutely incorrect, sir.
Because that floor should have been done.
And I, and I absolutely wish you wouldn't make comments of that nature.
That floor should have been done already. You're holding up the, the children over here.
Sir, you don't know what you're talking about. Would you please...
We had a meeting on a Friday morning. I was there. Y'all called me...
Listen.
Two hours ahead of time.
Listen.
I got it.
You just can't tell people anything.
Sir, I'm following proper protocol and procedures that we should follow as a council.
Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract for sports court of Arkansas to replace the gym floor in the Chester Heinz Community Center.
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with sports court for, of Arkansas to replace the gym floor in the Chester Heinz Community Center.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with sports court of Arkansas to replace the gym floor in the Chester Heinz Community Center. Any discussion?
I have a question. The first bid, the first, our, the first request for proposals went out. What did it ask for?
I think that's something Mr. Matthews would have answered. Is he still there?
First bid went out.
The first bid that went out, did it ask for all the floors or did it ask for just this one floor?
It asked for all the floors.
It asked for all floors?
Yes. Same as the second.
Same as other?
Yes, sir.
And nobody else bid. So we had a legal bid the first time around. We had two bids in and one bid late.
That's what went out and that's what we got back.
And we had a legal, we had a legal bid process.
As far as I know yet.
As far as the city attorney has said. Okay. That's what I wanted.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Harvey?
No.
Asked for no...
Motion carries. That's the end of the list?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor...
Yes, sir.
On our procedures tonight, unless we are in a serious hurry, when we do ordinance and resolutions, and we did a title on it and it was voted, I just think we need to read our ordinance and resolution at least one time. Well, we read resolutions once, but I think all ordinance should be read at least once, and maybe the first time ought to be read at least once. And we can do, we can do title by, by title only on the second and third, but I believe in reading it one time.
Agreed. Thank you.
It will go to committee, then when it comes back from committee, we will read the whole, the whole thing. So if you would, please, next time we will read the whole thing.
When it comes back from committee, that, that would be the time to do it. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it. It's been moved and properly seconded. We adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for attending.